Let's call this.
Is that on the recorder?
Yep, back on. All right, let's call this meeting, Planning Commission meeting for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to order at seven P. M. Roll call.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
And Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason Kans, Planning and Zone Administrator, and Denny Faro is excused.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Minutes from the previous meeting of August ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Public comment. Anyone wishing to make any public comment right now can come forward, or you can wait to your agenda item, either one. Okay. See none, we'll head into new business. Special use permit public hearing request. Proposed nineteen point two kilowatt ground mounted solar energy system. Oh, wait a minute, I'm on the old one. Ah, sorry. Special permit public hearing zero nine one three two three dash one. Proposed solar energy system ground mounted system to be located at one thousand Commerce Drive in Marquette, within the zone developmental district, development district. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight zero one seven zero two nine zero zero. Applicant is John Kangas, manager for Marquette Charter Township, one thousand Commerce Drive in Marquette. Jason.
So this project is actually something I'm pretty excited about. I've always wanted the Township Hall to be a demonstration site, whether it was good landscaping or building design. We have an opportunity by way of the Township Board, which has approved some funding to have a solar array on the property. So this is the parcel that we're working with, which is the parcel that we're sitting on right now. It is in the development district, surrounded by DD on the north, south, and west. And because we do have residential zoning and land use to the east, we did notify all of the neighbors. Did receive one call from a gentleman, didn't leave his name, but I did call him back and speak to him, and he just had a few questions, but anything adverse to the proposal. So here you can see kind of a mock site plan, really not much to it. Looking at a proposed nineteen point two zero kilowatt ground mounted solar array and a forty, or four eighty watt modules. And then next to the building, there'll be a utility meter and an AC disconnect. Copy of the survey next to it. And this is the array at the end or north side of Third Street on NME's property. So very similar project, same company actually that we're working with for that. And it'll supplement and offset some of the costs here at the Township. I think the return on investment is around fifteen years. Randy, do you know that off the top of your head? Yeah. So, yeah, we're excited about it. And, you know, we did make some zoning changes to allow residential solar, this type of array, and the nineteen kilowatt variety would still require a special use permit. And although we may be exempt from doing this, I thought it was good to lead by example and just go through the process and obviously open it up to anybody that may have some concerns or comments about it. But again, I'm excited about the opportunity to have, you know, further demonstration of good land use and sustainable practices here at the Township Hall, while landscaping, which is native landscaping for the most part. And so with that, if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we have not received any negative comments, or anything for the project either. But I think that solar has become, I don't know, also named in the last several years.
So I have one question. So are there, there are covenants in this area? So do you want to address the covenant?
Yeah, we had a brief discussion with the, I guess, the managers of the business park here. And if this is approved, once this is approved, then we will reach out to them and let them know that it's been approved and ask them if they want any kind of screening. Obviously, the screening can't be very much, or, you know, can't interfere with the arrays. But we did have a conversation with them, and they've worked with us, we've worked with them, so I think they're pretty open to the idea.
So do you think this will open up some of the other developments in this business park to pursue the same?
Potentially, sure.
The federal government has some nice.
Yes, there are some, I guess, incentives right now. Thirty percent of the cost, I believe, is being borne by feds through tax relief, I think it is. So, yeah, we would like, you know, kind of do a demonstration site and show how it's done, and then hopefully other people catch on to that and utilize the renewable energy source as well.
On this application, it lists the parcel size as thirty-four point five eight acres. That was probably not correct, I would guess.
That was the original parcel size, but yeah, this parcel here is about four acres.
Would be any excess power provided?
Any of that is will be kicked back to the utility system, through the Board of Light Power. Not sure. Yeah, I guess we'll have to wait and see, but good question. I can report back to you after, you know, it's installed and we get it going, see how, what the return is.
Is there any covenant that prohibits that, or is it just covenants as far as having it screened, or is there any covenant that addresses this specifically?
I don't believe it was, you know, specific, but it is considered a structure by definition. And so, you know, if we were to put up a accessory building of some sort, which has been talked about previously, that would have to be covenanted. So I don't think the covenant addresses this specifically, and so, but we wanted to reach out preemptively to the business park because there is covenants here.
But you didn't really need to, because nothing's prohibiting those in any of the covenants then.
To my understanding, no.
Yep.
Yeah, and the only thing I could really see us doing would be, you know, perhaps a screening fence along the street side, if that was more, but again, we'll discuss it with them and accommodate any minimal screening that I needed.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Well, then let's open the public hearing at seven oh nine. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward now. Seeing none. Last call, like Jason likes. Okay. No one here to speak, so we'll close the public hearing at seven ten. Commissioners, any more questions or comments or motions?
Yeah, I'm a big proponent of this. I think it's an excellent idea.
I agree.
Me too.
Me too. I think maybe we can get this going, and the school, maybe we'll be able to get theirs going. They've already come to us.
Yep.
School, so, you know, we could be on the forefront of.
It's becoming a more affordable option, and.
What is the cost of this project?
I believe it's around thirty thousand-ish. Higher, fifty.
Seventy, I think.
Seventy.
Seventy?
The largest user of solar, to my knowledge, is Germany, which is on the same line of latitude that we are. So there's no excuse for us not to utilize it. I mean, we're not in Denver or some of the western plains states, or not plains states, but leeward states, which have an average of three hundred sun days a year, but we still get a lot on those high pressure days, so. They work when it's cloudy, too. It's just like getting a suntan when it's partly cloudy. I mean, you're still going to get a suntan, so.
And we will give the rebate, is my understanding.
Yep, we qualify for the rebate.
So it might be seventy thousand dollars upfront, but we're going to get thirty thousand, thirty percent back, I think.
Yes.
So we'll make sure that everyone knows how that works. The Board will make sure because people will be interested. Thirty percent's a good number.
Yep.
Thirty percent back from who?
The federal.
Feds.
In cash?
Tax.
It's tax credit.
Thirty percent off your taxes.
Taxes.
Yeah. Well.
We'll have to see how that all works.
I mean, do we pay taxes to Township?
Not property taxes.
Well, in the state of Michigan.
Yeah, I guess I don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay.
It was something that the Board wanted to do, presented by the solar company that we've been working with on some of the residential stuff. And if you didn't know, the Township Board did approve zoning language for residential solar to be a rooftop system. So that was done at their last board meeting. We have an ad going in the newspaper, should be there tomorrow. And then, seven days from that, it'll be live, so we expect it to be back. I'll report back on the finance side of it. Which wasn't really contemplated by our department.
Right, right, so, you know, whatever. Well, we'll have to see, but I'm sure people will be interested in knowing what the incentives are. It's like windows, right?
Okay, well, if anyone would like to make a motion, get it going, we'll accept that.
I'll make a motion to approve special use permit, public hearing number zero nine one three two three dash one, for the proposed solar energy system, as noted, in urgent.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Steve Hakenin.
Yes.
Bethany Cody.
Yes.
Linda Winslow.
Yes.
Johnson, yes. Jackson, yes. Four zero. Okay. Six B. Another special use permit public hearing, zero nine one three two three dash two. Proposed short-term rental land use to be located on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. Parcel tax ID five two zero eight three four zero zero five two four zero. Applicant is Tyler Govern, four ninety-five Brickyard Road in Marquette. Jason.
Thank you, still. This is a special use in the urban residential district. Property is located here at seven ten Ontario, which is just east of the St. Christopher's Church. We've notified everybody within three hundred feet of the property. We've expressed to Mr. Govern that, you know, there is a tax effect if you rent your property more than fourteen days a year, you lose your primary residence exemption, so you're aware of that. We did receive a call from Mr. Dan LaBelle. I had a fairly lengthy conversation with him about some concerns that he had. He did say that he was going to be here tonight, but I don't see him here. He's had the same concerns essentially as anybody else would, about noise, transients, and things of that nature. I did express to him that we haven't had any problems with any of our short-term rentals. I think we're up to about two dozen at this point in our fifty-four square miles of community. And he seemed to be okay with that. He wasn't tickled by it by any means, but I did express to him that we do have a noise ordinance and a nuisance ordinance, and as this is a special use permit, if Mr. Govern was approved tonight and didn't perform well, it could be revoked. So that made him feel better, I believe, about that. Anyway, the property is as indicated here.
Is there a home, is there no home on a lot directly east of that? Or?
Blue.
What's the blue thing there? Is that car?
East of it is another home.
It's like a double lot, I guess you'd call it. I looked on a parcel, I didn't see it split, but I already talked to the guy, like, I guess it's, they store a bunch of, uh.
Is that a home there?
Further of company that's son owns.
Really? Okay. I'll take a look at that.
There's a bunch of trailers there.
It's vacant?
Three hundred feet. No, I mean, it's not vacant, they just park stuff there.
No, 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 is there a home there?
I can't see a home.
No, like, are you saying, Tyler, are you saying this is this home, he has a double parcel, and then he parks his stuff over here?
Yes.
And we're saying there's no home on this parcel?
No, there's not.
Home is this one.
All right, all right.
Well, that makes it even more.
I didn't realize that, so I looked at that map. See, I was looking at a different parcel map, and it was all combined, but this one's split.
Understood. So anyway, this one's about your parcel.
Yes.
And, you know, you submitted a narrative for the Planning Commission's reference. Mr. Govern is here, and he can answer any questions that you might have. Other than Mr. LaBelle's phone conversation that I had, I did not receive any initial correspondence on this project.
Jason, where does Mr. LaBelle live?
I'm not positive. He didn't indicate where he lived, and I'm not exactly sure.
He lives on, or, yeah, heading towards the woods. Yeah, back in there, front of those. Yeah, because there's a big ravine, we're not street downs.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he lives there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's urban residential all the way around. This is part of Trowbridge Park's plan in section sixteen. And all of his fees been paid, and he provided the information that we requested of him.
And your recommendation?
Well, we recommend approval, barring any, if we had any red flags, we would let you know. But, you know, I think if you read through Mr. Govern's narrative, he's very thoughtful, and it is an allowable use in our area. So, yeah, we recommend approval, intended upon favorable review by the Planning Commission.
All right, I guess I had a question before we opened up the public hearing. Maybe you could answer, Jason. I noticed in his notes, he said that he lives part-time at twenty sixty-two Summit Street, and he does use it as a short-term rental. But I don't see it listed as a short-term rental in the list that Eric gave us.
Is that true?
I mean, it's in there. I looked, I had that meeting with you guys four years ago. That's how I recognized you a little bit.
Okay, so you do have one.
I was going to say, it should be in there, but I was going to comment on what that one neighbor had about. I had a call, I did this in twenty nineteen for Summit Street. And I've had no issues since, but I think the call was similar to that, that slight concern. Like, back then, I had no experience, I said I could try my best, whatnot, but like, four years now, quite a few reservations. The neighbors are pretty happy. Try to keep it.
Yeah, because, I mean, it makes perfect sense that you have an approval when we may not have an honor roster, maybe that was before Eric started keeping track of it, I'm not sure. But we'll, we'll update that list for you. I recognize the name from a previous applicant.
Do for fire inspection soon, like, it's every two years, but I know I paid the small fee every year, I think, for your business license.
Yeah. Well, that means you have an approval then.
I remember the address was wrong like two years ago, though. I was behind a couple months because it didn't go through or something. It was like twenty fifty-two, I think Eric had it or someone, but then we did correct that like a year ago.
Okay. Well, we'll take another look at it.
So then, the mailing address is four ninety-five Brickyard Road.
Correct.
Do you live there also? Live at both places?
Yeah, I mean, here, live at both. I mean, that's mainly my mailing address, that's her address. That's where all my mail usually goes.
I'm his parents' house.
Okay. And, I don't know, should we wait for the public hearing or whatever? Just, just for our notes or for something in the future here? I know we talked about getting addresses put on the houses, and I noticed, I drove by there tonight, and I don't know if there, if you have any numbers on your house, because it looks like you replaced in the front door or something on there?
I was, and I don't know if you ever drive by, I noticed, assuming it was one of you guys, because they're driving so.
That was me.
Saying in the deck, like, a half hour before I got here, I had the front door covered. There's an address, though.
Is there? Okay.
There was the numbers on the mailbox when I.
Yeah. There's supposed to be on the house, too.
I just put those on.
Put them on the house, two, three inches or larger.
Yeah, there is some on there, there's even some bigger ones, though.
Okay.
We're trying to encourage people to do that, so the, the service people can go to my door.
Future tenants, they've got to find the house somehow.
Yeah. Everyone should do that, right? Yeah.
Sure. I put some big ones in my Summit Street house.
Any more questions for Jason before we open up the public hearing? All right. Then let's open up this public hearing at seven twenty-four. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward now, or if we have any questions for Mr. Govern from anyone, I'm sure you want me to answer them for us, any further questions? Or if there's anything further you'd like to say?
Should be good, I think, as far as that.
Okay.
Tyler, you have one short-term rental now, and this will be your second one?
Correct. So I gave him a twenty nineteen, I got my license for the first one. I think that was like one of the, I think that was like the third or fourth one back then. I think it just like came out that you guys actually required like a permit or whatever. Which is a good idea, though.
Okay, well, anyone wishing to speak? Any, anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-five. And any more discussion or questions? Not relating to this, but kind of, kind of to this, Jason, would, when we have these, either a request or a public hearing, could we get a list and clue with a packet of all the, like a map of all the short-term rentals?
Correct.
See where they all are located? I know we, I've got, I got the email from you, but maybe if we just put it in the packet and up-to-date one, because it didn't have that one on Summit Street on there.
Sure.
And so just to be clear, sometimes people stop doing rentals, short-term rentals, right? How do we know they stopped doing them? They're only asked because our list won't be correct? Do they tell you they're not going to do, or do they get sold?
Well, they wouldn't renew their business license.
So that's how it happened? Okay.
But the use stays with the property.
Right, right, but if they don't renew.
Mr. Govern sells the home, he can market it as a short-term rental.
But, so what if, for example, they decided not to do a short-term rental anymore, and they said, we're not going to do that anymore, we don't want this anymore, can we get our home set exemption back? Can that be done?
They can.
Okay, so how does it travel with the, with the property, then? It's not, it's not for the applicant, it's for the property?
Correct.
So if somebody bought that property, didn't really know, and then they found that, well, there's no home set exemption on this for you, what, then they'd have to, what, eliminate the, the special use permit themselves, even though they hadn't applied for it?
I just think it's always underlying.
Right.
So if he moves into one of his houses and just lets us know that he's there, and he's not going to do short-term rental anymore, turn the P R E back on. And if he wants to sell it, and he conveys it through the sale, then it's a short-term rental, or can be, then it would be turned back on.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just communication.
Okay. I wonder what the city does, because they have a limit, you know, with theirs, and I don't know if it's, I think it's two hundred and fifty or something, but.
And they, yeah, if you give it back, it gets gone.
So, yeah.
Someone else gets it. Yeah, maybe we can look at that in the future. We don't have two hundred and fifty.
No, we don't.
And I do know someone gave theirs back, but I don't know that they said they gave it back. I mean, I don't know how that works, she just said, it's not a short-term rental. Maybe we don't know that yet, right, Jason?
Just dealing with market township stuff, yeah.
Right, well, that's where they, it is, it's in market township.
Okay. Motion, anyone?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit for a proposed short-term rental under item number zero nine one three two three dash two, located on.
Seven ten.
Seven ten Ontario, okay. There we go. Thank you.
One second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Linda Winslow.
Yes.
Bethany Cody.
Yes.
Steve Hakenin.
Yes.
And Johnson's yes. Passes for nothing.
Okay. Congratulations, and thanks for taking such good care of your properties. I read through and saw that you have a very high rating on your existing short-term rental, so please carry that forward.
Absolutely, yes. Quite a bit of time on that.
Well, it's nice to see somebody young taking advantage of your rights as a property owner and the zoning that we have in place.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll be in touch tomorrow. I'll have Eric get ahold of you and schedule your fire inspection, business license, application and all that.
Need any proof from my Summit Street house, too?
We have it.
I don't see you got it somewhere.
We have it. Probably the typo on the list that we put up. We'll sort it out tomorrow.
Six C. Special use permit public hearing request. Proposed short-term rental land use to be located on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. Parcel tax ID five two zero eight three six zero zero seven three zero zero. Applicant is Jennifer McCarthy, twenty-four forty-four West Fair Avenue in Marquette. Jason.
So Ms. McCarthy is here tonight, and you're of no relation, just throwing that out there. Great name, though.
Comment, very good.
Our family comes from County Cork in Ireland, if you weren't aware.
I'm married, and that's my ma, I'm a Riley.
Okay.
I'm married to McCarthy.
Yeah. But, yeah, we have received an application from, from Ms. McCarthy, and she owns a rather large lot in the middle of Trowbridge, over on West Fair. So we are asking to schedule a public hearing for the. So we are asking to schedule a public hearing um for the October eleventh meeting. And she submitted her narrative, zoning map, and of course uh we have the digital field card which shows the ownership being as Trobridge Park sub eleven lots seven thirteen to seven fifteen excluding um a portion of lot seven thirteen. So, pretty big lot and yeah, we felt it was a complete application and certainly warranted a public hearing.
Was there any correspondence?
No, this is just a public hearing request. Yep. So the planning commission has to schedule a special use permit.
Driven by the house, that's lovely. You've done a nice job on it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do have house numbers that were on the house that um I bought beautiful ones and they're big enough and it stained the piece of wood on it, so they're currently in the basement. Gonna be redone and put back on the house, so it is on my to-do list.
I'm just gonna ask.
I know. You said that. I was like, house numbers are not and we didn't have house numbers for a while, but since we are considered and I understand the importance of them. I had to get them perfect.
And you are aware of the tax application?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Nice lot too.
Thank you.
Looks very nice.
Yep.
Who wants to make the motion on this one?
I will. I'll make a motion that we handle a public hearing for.
October eleventh at seven P M.
October eleventh at seven P M. For the parcel tax ID number five two dash zero eight dash three six zero dash zero seven three dash zero zero applicant Jennifer McCarthy.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
You get to come back.
Thank you. I'll be here.
Thanks for coming.
My number is, yeah, on the house by then, I promise.
Well, I yeah. That's where I grew up, so I know all those houses, so it looks very nice and.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
Yeah, the walls could talk. You would hear something on the street.
It's a great.
I grew up in that house, but in that neighborhood, yeah, not that.
Uh no one finished business and no correspondence, so let's head to the township board report.
Well, Jason said and that is correct that we approved the.
Thank you, everyone.
See you guys.
Have a good month.
Good luck.
After the second meeting, um the zoning and the solar energy system, so that was really successful. Eric came and answered questions from the board, so thanks to all of you guys.
Yeah, Eric Eric I'd like to give Eric some credit there. He really led the charge on that.
He did and and a nice job and or Eric had to sit through a meeting. So it goes, right?
It may not be that long.
Sometimes they are too. Just depends, right, Randy? Randy? Just depends. Uh we did um approve the fire department to hire three new folks, so that's good. And we also um are getting this fixed, this table. So it's gonna have what I would call um some wings, so um I don't have to keep backing up for Jim to see. Done on this end.
That's what we wanted to be.
Well, my my hope is it's gonna have a center and then it's gonna wing out, so we'll see how. And it's gonna be at least two inches lower, so they'll be able to see us over the top.
Oh, this will be two inches lower?
Mm-hmm. That's the intent. We decided we didn't need to be back here. The electrical stuff will still be there. We'll probably move to the community room for a month of meetings or maybe less. It just depends. I'm not sure if they're doing anything with the carpeting. We talked about carpeting not being the best choice or anything anymore.
Yeah, unless you do the squares where you can rip one out.
Well, I think we're gonna that's what they talked about. Good, yes. And we did have and Danny's not here, but we did have a board education session from Steve Armwood. He's with Invest U P and it's with um arm, I'll call it an arm of Invest U P. They got money from whoever they're fifteen million dollars to Invest U P um to work with what's called Build Up or Build U P. So I don't know if you followed any of that. Um I'm guessing Jason has followed some of that build up. And I'm hoping, Linda Winslow's hoping that the people who are talking about making um building housing over on the five acre parcel are working with them. That's my hope. Okay. What what that housing will look like, how it will all work, if Munising's doing anything. Have you heard Munising working with? They have, Randy, did they say they had four applicants complet- applications completed? The fifteen million is for the whole U P. I asked, are we gonna like spread it equally or is it gonna end up in one pot in the center or? And they said the applicants were equally across the board at this point. I think that's public knowledge, but he didn't tell us who they were, but I think you can go on the site and see who's applied, I think.
Who decides who gets the money?
Invest U P decides, I think, and this up U P or.
They make all the decisions?
Why, I think I don't quote me, but you might, you know.
Not after Jen Hill or?
No, it's not Jen Hill. You know who Marty?
Platante. They have a board. Invest U P has the board of directors. They'll make the decisions.
Oh, they do. It's not any of ours. You know, you can get involved in all that stuff if you wanna spend a lot of.
The money come from the state?
It does. I think through the the federal government probably sent it to the state. It's probably COVID money or is there really COVID present? I don't know. But it came from. You know, I always say Marty Filatante. Is that how you say?
No.
Platante.
Platante is the Tom Maldini of yest- you know, Tom he was Tom did a lot of that stuff, so. That's how I see him. He kinda looks like him. I think uh I think it was good to listen to him. And I hope I hope someone in the U P Marquette township is moving, but they can say Marquette potentially was putting in an application. I don't know, you know, sometimes they call us Marquette, so.
So the deadline is when you can apply and when they're gonna start announcing who gets it?
Well, they have to give it away. They have to send that money out there or loan that money or whatever. There's a deadline on those kind of funds. So I think they have seven point five million to be out by the end of this year. Is that what you're hearing?
I wasn't at the meeting. No, I don't know. They've been sitting on that money for a while and now all of a sudden it's available. They didn't have any parameters prior to it. Now, all of a sudden they're, you know, hurry up and wait and then now it's hurry up.
It's hurry up because they have a deadline. They they gotta get rid of that money, just like every other. Well, every other thing I've been involved in at the state level, they they gotta get rid of it cuz they won't ask for more and you don't. You know, if there's a deadline, you either get rid of it or give it back.
Yeah, they wanna demonstrate. I think the original ask was for like fifty million and they got fifteen.
Which is great.
So they wanna demonstrate that it's working and if it does, then they'll go back.
Working how? What are what are they doing with the money?
Well, they wanna build housing.
Is it grant money?
It's gap funding basically for affordable housing.
So we'll have to see, Steve. We'll have to follow it. Um I think he was taped for his presentation. It was a little it's always hard when you bring someone in virtually because even though we think we have a great system, it isn't always great. So it's a little shaky, Randy, right?
It's actually okay. It's not bad.
It's not perfect.
I've seen worse.
Yeah, we usually turn off the picture cuz the voice is better, but I I would encourage you to listen to that or look him up or look up um Build Up because I typed that in and a lot of stuff came up. So and then my my understanding is they have seven point five million to spend in what I'll call the second round. So I hope someone applied. I don't know how we'd get.
But this is all just related to housing though?
Build U P, yeah.
Not just residential like?
Yeah, it could be apartments, is my understanding. It could be condos. Could be small houses, but.
Is this just going to governments or?
It is going to builders, I think. Builders builders are applying. We're not applying.
So Forestville could have a law you could apply to get money?
I don't think so.
No, it's a huge conflict of interest.
It's they couldn't apply, right? Forestville, they're that's not the right target audience.
They have board members that are.
Yeah, no, that's the wrong target audience for housing.
Okay, but builders can apply along with.
I'm not I'm not sure.
I'm not sure how that works.
We can bring back some additional information if you're interested in learning more about it.
Or you can go on the site. I think the site was pretty.
Yeah.
The site was really good. And if you know Marty or any of their board members, find them. Ask them. Jason, I don't know them. I mean, I know who they are. So that's it. That's enough.
All right.
Rec committee meeting, uh we meet next week and we'll be discussing a potential capital improvement project request from the rec committee regarding pickleball. That'll go to the board and it may include the cost of resurfacing the tennis court at Lions Field. Row committee met earlier in the month and they discussed among a couple other things, uh meeting frequency. So I think they agreed to do six meetings a month instead of twelve, or maybe it was eight, but not twelve. Not every month, which is probably appropriate. Planning and zoning report. We did receive Lonier's uh final P U D application and information packet. So what I'd like to do is to get that out to the review agencies that were a part of the review previous to this, uh specifically the row commission. And uh and have that it's it's essentially a site plan review because we've already approved the preliminary and do that at the second meeting in October, which would be scheduled for then October twenty-fifth. Everybody would be back for that, I would assume. Eric and I are also signed up for the Michigan Planning Conference. I've been to so many of them, but I can't think of a year where I'm more excited to go than this year because of all the stuff that's going on with funding, chasing money trails, um short-term rental legislation, questions about corporations or L L Cs buying properties as as investments and then utilizing them if they have sixteen members. Lots of different that's not happening here, but there's another community that I assist. Stuff like that. Um a lot of just rules and regulations legislative questions that I have, so we're excited about that. And of course, uh learning more about affordable housing and the new residential tips that are available. I believe that we may have a project up on Venture on the south side um that may be utilizing that program very early in the discussion with that. But the gentleman that would be the proposed developer on that property also helped write the legislation because he's a pretty well-known developer downstate. And his daughter happens to be going to Northern and he wants to make an investment up here. So, yeah, lots to learn and just I always feel rejuvenated when I go to the conference and you just learn that, you know, the things that you have concerns with are very much the concerns of other planners and planning commissioners. Well, they're mostly planners uh in the state, so. Uh that is in Traverse City, which I just came from essentially um last weekend. So that'll be the first week in October, so four, five and six. Leave on Tuesday, conference on Wednesday, Thursday, couple sessions in the morning Friday, then we'll be faintly back here. Can't wait to report back on what we've learned and if there's any swag or uh literature that I can grab, I'll be sure to do that if it's uh relevant to our situation here. Beyond that, um myriad of things going on. I know Eric's had some residential stuff. I did bring a uh a developer from the Green Bay area who represents some national chains around. He initially met in my office. I had made a map with about six different sites that are available for development in the community. They're zoned appropriately. And we went and toured those sites, so he represents um Chupole, um Aldi and Costco, Sam's. So that was positive and I I think we did a good job of customer service and showing him, I mean, not that we are we can't broker anything, but we can show him what properties are available and uh some of our rules and regulations, design standards, um stormwater, things of that nature. He had some pretty interesting questions, so. That was positive and yeah, just day-to-day stuff. Still busy.
I got a couple questions. I noticed as I was driving past um the golf course, the development work that's going on in the I don't know what the development's called that the bunks put in there, that P U D.
Edible silos.
Yeah, so they've got two two poured foundations in there, I assume, for those those two rental cottages.
To stay in place.
What is all that development that's going further into the golf course? What is that? That's like a couple hundred feet of leveling the are they putting another building in there? Is has their plans changed for what they're they were gonna do in there?
No.
I I'm I was wondering the same thing.
I mean, they're putting a lot of lot of.
It looks like you might just be landscaping.
But it's flat as a board. I mean, it just, you know, so I was just kinda curious what was going on there.
I don't think they they do all that and then go in there and dig it up to put, you know, footings in again, I guess. That's what I was thinking.
And the other thing is, we had talked about the um the uh medical um equipment manufacturer that is right across from the old township hall and nine oh six technology is storing their equipment there.
Yeah, and I.
They haven't moved squat.
I expressed to you that it was temporary during the construction of the bank project on the corner.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Does it cuz that those were there before that bank project ever even started and they're still over there.
Sure, there was an agreement in place, but yeah, I've reached out to.
Okay, okay, cuz I hadn't heard anything that, you know.
And it obviously said, you know, this isn't what we signed up for on this property.
Okay.
He just indicated that it was temporary during construction.
Okay, okay.
I'll keep an eye on it.
Figured that.
See, we're growing.
Yeah, I mean, they're going uh full bore on the uh the daycare center as well and yeah, it's exciting to see. I mean, you drive through some communities in the U P and there's just nothing going on. And yet here, there's always something going on. Panera's just about closed. Um the footings are in for Texas Roadhouse. They're starting on the structure work. Uh utilities are installed. The concrete's been poured. Asphalt's been poured, so.
Dean Manning's garage thing that I super want behind the bowling alley is moving. And there's houses for sale where I live for a lot of money.
Oh, quick trip. Is that going over there in the Tribes property?
Um to my knowledge, they had a a falling out of about, well, it's not gonna put a dollar amount on it, but it's I think it's negotiable.
Yeah.
They had a falling out with Dazna too.
Yeah.
And raise the price, uh the mall, Old Market Mall. That was all set to go and then he somebody told me that he raised the price five hundred thousand on one before they were ready to sign.
Well, houses are expensive, that's for sure. Well, houses are expensive, that's for sure.
What about, I had a question on, last night I was driving by the Well Road, and there were cars parked on both sides of that Well Road, all the way up to Grove Street, and on both, on Grove Street, like fifty feet on each side, and I was trying to figure out what's going on in there. Do you have any idea?
No idea. I can ask John Kengas tomorrow, if there was something trail or...
I would assume.
I would assume, so.
Not big, I mean, there were a hundred cars in there.
A hundred cars?
Yeah, I mean, they were parked all the way down that road, you couldn't even get through, there was just like one lane in there.
Or emergency vehicle could...
Oh, no, not at all.
Well, I wonder why the gate was open, or how they got a hundred cars in there? Normally that's secure.
Yeah. I was just wondering if it was 906, you know, that had, because they always have like a bunch of people.
No, because they have their place now, and the kids are done.
They were at the tourist park, and they had like...
Right, but the kids are done, that's done. It was first, we started the last of August, we're back.
There wasn't a race or anything, so, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's a bike.
Yeah.
We won't hear about that, we'll just remember.
That's correct.
Okay, any announcements?
I did forget one thing, I wanted to let everyone know that the Sands Township did get a grant to do electronic recycling, and the schedule is posted on our website. Randy? Did we post the Sands recycling schedule on our website?
I'm not sure, I can see later.
Yeah, so you can take out computers, monitors, all electronics, and I think it's partially free. And the garbage hauler that we have has been trialing a new truck to pick up your recyclables, and it has an arm on it, and it goes right out and picks them up and dumps them in, and it takes only one person, and... So, my understanding from conversation is that our hauler ordered one of those trucks. So that means do not put your garbage on top of your recycle can, nothing will get them. The other thing I heard is that there might be a grant out there to get garbage cans.
Big ones like the recycling?
Like they have in Florida, yep. Then, you, yeah, we'll see, have you heard that Jason?
No, that would be the building that grows apartment.
Such as for Township, or City, or?
The brand.
Yeah.
Who knows, it came from...
Probably the same thing as the other one, different colors, so they can automatically pick them up.
Yeah, that's how they do it. In other places. So we don't, I'm not sure if that could be just, but I do know that farm thing was very nice, I watched it happen.
Yeah, I've seen those too, pretty quick.
Yeah, and no injuries, lots less garbage, people injuries.
Next meeting's on September 27th, we'll see if that's warranted or not. We may not have, as of right now, we don't have anything, so I'll keep it posted, but try not to waste your time or mine, and so I'll let you know next week or so.
Any other public comment, even though there's no public here? I guess Randy counts. Seen none, okay, additional comments by planning commissioners?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
And I'm good, meeting adjourned. Startin' sweet, huh?